...for a political fair. Come on, if you want to, you sit there if you want to.
Yeah, I'm Tom Weisman. I'm an associate real estate broker with Tom Smith Land and Homes. I've got the listing on Mr. Ray Tean's property there at Highway 15 and I-22. And prior to working with Tom Smith Land and Homes, I spent 29 years in appraisal with MDOT, you know, appraising property throughout the state of Mississippi. And we've had the listing since September of 2016. At that time, we've had very few inquiries about it. It's currently zoned residential. And under the current zoning class, the city is not going to change the zoning to a commercial use or commercial zoning. Prior to us getting a buyer, and we're not going to, it's clear we're not going to be able to get a buyer with a big zoned residential with them paying a commercial price. So what I thought would be an equitable solution would be to do if the city would consider creating a new zoning classification of some sort of a planned commercial district that would solve some of the problems with the neighbors. Prior to Mr. Tean had requested his zoning changed over years ago when the neighbors protested, and that was, my understanding, was probably the biggest impediment to getting this zoning changed. My suggestion would be to just work with the neighbors and see what their problems were, your right to ordinance in such a way that would, you could exclude any uses that the neighbors would have a problem with.
Do you got any kind of recommendations? Or?
Yeah, my thoughts on it would just be to write in such a way as to include motels, sit-down restaurants, strip centers, retail, office space, and exclude your negative uses such as 24-hour fast food restaurants, convenience stores, laundry mess, that type of thing. And that would, I don't know how that would, that probably fit in with your tenure plan. It will also put it to a more productive use than is currently, you're cutting hay on, I-22 frontage. You would increase your tax base.
Where's the problem? I'm not sure.
And you're asking us to change the zoning?
Not that...
Consider opening a new zoning classification.
A planned commercial. Because the current, your current zoning, your commercial zoning is, it includes just about everything, which is part of the problem that your neighbors have. If you were just to currently change it to a CT zoning, which is your general commercial, you could put anything there.
Okay.
And I recommend just talking to the neighbors and see what, let them have an input in it.
Eric, do you have any input, or you've been approached about that?
Yeah, I mean, basically, we just have the CT, you know, for commercial. We've got C1 downtown, but we get the C2 forever, all the other commercials. But it's pretty much opened up to just about anything. I think what he's, you know, will eliminate is like maybe gas stations and stuff like that that would be open all the time.
The 24-hour type things that would be, would bother the neighbors.
I think, didn't you say that time was like, was it South Haven or some, something of that?
South Haven, Horn Lake, DeSousa County do have a planned commercial district zone.
Well, I guess our next step would be, Eric, you want to talk to the neighbors down there and see what, or we'll have a meeting and buy them or see?
We can have a meeting for that, you know, and say that and see what their concerns are.
That suits you well, I'm sure.
Yeah, and Bill, I think I know how that feels. We discussed it before, but it's not to this extent, you know, changing just only certain businesses. I guess we'd look in other city ordinances, see that zoning falls out, and see how that feels. Again, if we were to change it, I think that'd be right, Eric, but I don't have to come back. If we were to change it, they'd have to request, I mean, both to change it, we couldn't just change it without their request.
We'd have to affect the classification first, then we'd have to do a change.
In the way that, DeSousa County, South Haven, Horn Lake, you do submit a plan, you know, before construction starts. You get the zoning classification upfront, which would help us sell it. And then, but then, before the plan is approved, it has to be approved by the zoning commission.
One problem that I see with that property is there's no access, there's not a access road, a fronting road, rather, you don't turn on popper, which is a residential area to get into. But I'm open to looking into it.
All right, we'll start there.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks.
Okay, let's move in general city business, light gas water. Do you get any?
I just got one thing, we're going to do this right. We had some items we declared surplus that were sold at auction. I think I need to report back the results. Is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we sold five items, I've got, I don't know if I can give you the minutes. There was a John Deere tractor we sold, one that had the wiring issues, $11,700. A 2000 Ford F-150 for $3,700. A 2010 Ford F-150 for $1,700. A 2008 Ford F-150 for $1,250. And then the pick of the litter, he kind of can't believe you missed this, is 2003 Crown Big for $425.
That meant a deal, wasn't it? It would have been.
What about the emergency purchase?
Yes, we had a phone call about that one, so just go over that.
Yeah, that's supposed to be.
Yes, I forgot about that. Actually, over the, with the cold weather we had back in mid-January, we had some regulators that they, they helped boost the voltage up to our customers at Blue Mountain. That's kind of a long circuit route. It starts in North Haven, goes all the way to Blue Mountain. And we have, of course, the colleges up there, and we have oil dry period big industry, so we have these regulators in line to boost the voltage. And both of them failed, those sets of regulators failed during really cold weather. And we had some spare parts, we were able to get one go in, and then anyway, we called in some help and got them kind of patched back together, but we used up pretty much all of our spare parts. So we needed to make an emergency, at least buy one of the regulators under emergency purchase orders. We could, they're kind of long lead time items. If we had to bid, it was going to add two or three weeks to the, to the purchase lifecycle. Anyway, we were able to get a, we had a, I guess a conference call, we were able to get at least three of y'all, Steve Keith and Kevin Dale and Johnny, were on the call, we were able to get that approved to buy through emergency purchasing guidelines. So that was one set of regulators. I think the, I don't have the exact amount of the, the deal, it's around $42,000 for that one set of regulators. And then we're going to come back and we'll buy another set just through normal purchasing policy or practice.
Okay. The only thing is, she does need to put that in the minutes, so if you can get her...
I will get the exact amount. Yeah, I went to Howard Industries down at Marlboro, it was roughly $42,000, but I'll get the exact amount.
Bill, on the auction, did y'all use Brandon?
We did, we did. We used Brandon for at least three of the, three of the items, and it went really well. He had a good auction, probably do that every year.
Okay.
So we'll try to participate if it's not...
What's his last name?
Meeks.
Mason, right? Mason, I saw, yes, I saw Mason. I had the M right.
What's that?
No, the vote was passed in the special meeting. The only thing that has to be, because it was not normal bidding, it has to be reported publicly, and that's why I had to stay in.
That's all I have here. Okay. Police Department Chief to get...
Yeah, a couple things, Mayor. First thing is, I want to request the board permission to purchase a new Tahoe for a place of 2,005 miles, 179,000 miles, which we're starting to have trouble with. And this would purchase out of the task force fund, and there's money there to do that, wouldn't come out of the regular line of my budget, and just be on state contract.
Yeah, about that much? So, I got a motion, Johnny, have a second. Steve and Kevin Dale, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? Any opposed? Get your motion carries.
Second item, Mayor's not really, I'm not sure that I need, or the board needs to act on it, I just need to make the board aware of along the way. It's kind of happened today, we've been kind of working on it the last couple days, finally got a letter drawn up today. I've already talked with the board about the DUI position, that the state has changed their guidelines for the next year. And under their current, under these, under those guidelines, we will not qualify for a designated DUI full-time officer. So, basically, we got a gap, of our company board, we have one officer that's been hired on a contingency basis, and he's fully aware of that. So here's what's happened, I have another officer that is basically resigning to take another job. So I have an opportunity to roll that DUI officer back into patrol, regular patrol, and basically, the contingency is gone. So I'm kind of back to other one, one officer who's deployed, I'm back to kind of full, full staff, or minus one. So we're seven months, here's, here's on, it's not really, I've already talked about the state. We're basically three months in, or five months in, and I think there's seven, six months, six and a half months left, or till September anyway. To fulfill our obligation, I've talked with the state about possibly changing that, the money that we were granted from the full-time position to overtime of some type, or to close that grant out and kind of rehash as total re-modification of the grant, and to come back and ask for speeding enforcement or DUI overtime. So we try to stay somewhat in the obligation part of it. I've explained to the state that I'd rather, I really don't have any choice, because what's going to happen next year, this is kind of where we're at, and I have an opportunity that I don't have to put anybody, possibly lay anybody off, and now's the time to do it. So they understand, and we're in the process of negotiating that, so I'm not sure if I need, if we need to do any board action, I just need to make you aware of it, kind of.
Reagan, do you?
Just trying to follow that well enough to answer it.
I think probably, you're going to put the DUI officer back in the patrol.
Yes.
Probably need board action on that.
Because he was working on, he was working on...
Yeah, I know, he's not going to grant, he's... Yeah, I would say I'd do that.
Well, here, okay.
Did it hire? It's not a new hire, it's a position change, so I don't...
Well, as long as you put it in the minutes, I don't think I'd as well call it, really.
The only problem is, we won't be reimbursed by the state, or his.
No, well, we'll be reimbursed up until this point, but when we cut it, when we cut it off, then that will, but we won't have that.
You want to do this immediately, or wait till a grant runs out?
No, we're not, if, here's, here's the deal, if I wait, if we wait till the grant comes out, I might have to work a short shift, you know? If I moved him back now and tried to hire somebody for seven months, I doubt I'd be able to find him, I'd say, look, I only worked here for seven months, and I probably have to lay you off. So now's kind of the time to do it. I know what's coming, I have an opening available, or there's an officer leaving, so I can kind of roll, he's, he's been a current employee, and just kind of roll him back in, and we'll try to renegotiate with the state on how we do, on the grant, and maybe come back as overtime or something different.
Who, who, I mean, what is the employee's name?
Brock White, and he's a DUI officer, but he was currently employed, I mean, he was employed before, so nobody knew. But he just was rolled into the DUI position, which was a grant, 100% grant funded position. We've had three or four officers hold that position.
He was already a senior?
Yes, yes.
Will you reimburse from the state, or is the, I don't know, we got to rehire him, but I don't know.
There's 16 patrol positions, and with the DUI position, they made it 17, which was a funded on its own position.
I mean, he was still an employee, we were just paying him out a different title.
Well, I think Tim's right, I don't really have to call it a hire, but if we're just going to take him to the police and pay him off, I think we're better off having some minutes than no minute, so.
But he was paid, was paid already, that, we were just reimbursed, just to...
No, I've got a motion, Miami, quit back on patrol, basically that's what we're doing.
Yes.
That was it.
Now, just, why, why are we not waiting till it runs out?
Because if you wait...
Why can't you not serve as a patrolman while he's DUI? I guess it's a better question.
Well, because they, they work, they only work Thursday, Friday and Saturday, or that's what they're supposed to work.
That's the states.
Yeah, that's the state guidelines. They're not, if they, I wished I could, to be honest with you, but their schedule is finite, when they have to work. As far as that goes. Now, if we put, get us out of a situation where I might potentially lay somebody off.
Same.
All right, we got a second. You hear the questions, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Get your motion carries.
Can I, can I ask a street, just a street question, and how this works in the past? As far as paving, I've just had people asking me, like, do we decide as a board, like, which roads get, I just didn't know how the procedure works.
What we've done in the past is just, you call in, and we won't pave until something relates on.
Okay.
But we have all, all of them call in and put their requests in, here's what street I won't pave, or part of this street, you know, and then we'll, about always will look at it and see. Because you're talking about 125 or 30,000 miles, I'll pave and that.
Right.
So we just kind of, as a group, will decide.
Priorities?
Yeah.
Okay.
So what's the reason behind the timeframe?
It just lays better when it's hotter.
So it has to be that late before it lays?
Well, it don't necessarily have to be, maybe July or...
Summer is the...
Yeah.
So we'll, we get, we start putting requests in late, late spring?
Yeah.
Okay, so I need to be kind of analyzing my roads and knowing, doing some priorities of which ones, because I've been getting some requests, but I need, so can I, do I have permission to go with, ride around with Johnny Payton and like, decide what?
Sure.
Okay.
And just call Slade, and she keeps a list in the board, just calling to her.
Okay, so I need to do some ranking of my roads and figure out which ones, okay. All right, thanks, I just wanted to ask.
Fire Department Chief Coker.
We have a, had an employee that left effective January 31st for another job at Oxford Fire Department. We need to fill that position, and we want to hire Mr. Jamie Shorter for this new spot.
So, Mr. Mike, my wheel, second, my Kevin Dale, any other questions to discuss? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we got three sets of minutes here to approve, December 5th meeting minutes. So, my, my Keith? Second, my wheel, any other questions to discuss? All in, all in favor? Any opposed? January 2nd meeting.
You sent all the ballots, I'm making sure.
I got most of Kevin Dale, I have a second. Second, Amy, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? And January 22nd, about 18 minutes.
So, maybe.
That's my Amy, have a second. Second, my wheel, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? Any opposed? Get your motion carries. All right, Eric, building the zoning. And all the files there in.
Yeah. I emailed y'all a question report, beyond the goal. We had a zoning meeting, a request from Cooks Adult Daycare on Los Hill Drive to rezone from R2 to C2 was denied by the zoning board. Somebody?
Are they going to pay over, do you know?
I don't know, I think they're going to do something else.
They said they weren't this time.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Now, let's move to general city business. Item A is approval or correction of planned dockers for January of 18. That's Miami. I have a second, my Keith, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, we got three sets of minutes here to approve, December 5th meeting minutes. So, my, my Keith? Second, my wheel, any other questions to discuss? All in, all in favor? Any opposed? January 2nd meeting.
You sent all the ballots, I'm making sure.
I got most of Kevin Dale, I have a second. Second, Amy, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? And January 22nd, about 18 minutes.
So, maybe.
That's my Amy, have a second. Second, my wheel, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? Any opposed? Get your motion carries. Highway 30, Starland Avenue, traffic lights, same story. They don't start on that. Since they want to get this damn tag passed, they want it. They have been out there doing a little survey.
We don't know that we banned red, that you...
One thing I noticed this weekend on, not Starland, but on the overpass, they did do yellow flashing light, and I tried to call Mark Colley to see, did you know about this?
I knew they were out there doing some...
Yeah, well, he, they're doing the survey to try to figure out the whole, and then they're supposed to be getting all the stakeholders to come in and meet about it and talk about what they're figuring out, so, but I wondered if they were trying the yellow lights to see, I didn't know, I don't know.
I don't know, they did that two weeks ago, too.
Yeah. I didn't see it two weeks ago, I just saw it Sunday, okay, but anyway.
I emailed them, because I was getting complaints out there on 30, where you get to West Side Barbecue, after you come past Mark Town Road, it turns to 55 through that area right there. And I asked them if they'd come and just look at the whole city and limit every street except interstate to 45 inside the city, and they said, they said that we were going to do a traffic study.
Oh, good.
If they would let us know what they did.
Oh, good. And then we still have the train issue, even today, yeah, today, it was blocking, how many?
Three.
Three. So, I mean, citizens have to call that MDOT number. We have to keep a record of the blocking, or there, we won't have anything, we got to prove. So that's what they said, we just call, call MDOT to keep the MDOT off the dispatch.
Mayor, I was posed this question, I, I think another answer, too, that y'all have done a lot more of the study, I think, here recently, the MDOT. Is, do they offer any other options for that intersection at Starland and 30, other than the traffic light? Do they offer any other possible solutions, or is there any other possible four-way stopper?
Nothing, nothing I'm aware of. Okay. Brad did a little work on it, do you know of any other?
Nothing I'm aware of. We were going, going to do some work on it, and we called MDOT, and MDOT had already done the traffic study for it, and their study warranted the traffic light, they just didn't have the money to.
Well, I was wondering, if there was any other thing, of course, I know they do a traffic study, and there's, that's a very complicated stretch of road right in that area. And I was wondering, I was posed a question, or, you know, if they don't have, if we don't, there's not enough funds available for a traffic light, what about a four-way stop of some type? And I said, well, I want to ask somebody that knows more about it than me a little bit.
That's the state, that I've decided, yeah, I don't think that's why.
In my limited discussion with them, they, they told me that it was warranted for a light, but they were skeptical on anything other than that because of proximity of the other red lights. But I didn't really push that much, I was trying to get a light, so I didn't get too much information on them, wanted to tell them it was too close.
But I think the study they're doing right now with the whole, that whole area, when they come with us with this plan to tell us the scope of that is going to help a lot see, like, it's going to, I think it's more expensive, but we can at least know what the scope is, we don't even have any idea.
Okay, sign orders, discussion, Amy, do you want?
I will, yeah, I will take that. I thought, we, I really did think we were going to be able to do it, but our city attorney advised me that we are not ready yet, and I have to take his advisement because it is a wall, and we don't want to put something out there that's not ready. Here are the big things that we need some feedback on, so I can put that out there. Do we allow, and I will say, where we are on it is very close. We have divided it up into almost like every, every zone is a separate ordinance almost. And that way, if you come in and you're in C1 or whatever, you just get this, and you just look at this, it's very, we're trying to be really simple, and a lot of it repeats itself, but some of it doesn't. So C1's almost like a separate district, I mean, a separate ordinance, so it's got its own, it's very similar to the first one we did, we just kind of redid some things. So here are the questions that we, that we need input on. Neon signs, are they allowed and where? Basically, right now, they're, we don't have them in C1, we don't want them in C1, but then, do you have them in C2 and where, and industrial and ATM signs, and open signs, all those? Pole signs, do you lower them? We have an opportunity to have a little bit of an aesthetic cleansing, and I've gotten a lot of people telling me they think we should lower pole signs, so that's in discussion. Digital displays, how big do you make them on the, the board, on the actual board? And that's pretty much it, those are like our big three that we need input on, kind of, like, the other stuff, we think we've got it from, with the general consensus. Of course, there's still some size about, like, in residential areas, how big do you allow a sign, like, business signs, you know, and that kind, so they obviously need to be smaller, and there's some, a little bit of question like that. So if anybody wants to email Eric, or me, or Reagan with some input, those are kind of, that's where we are. And pray that next month we'll have it finished.
At what point will there be an open public discussion about it, that's a scheduled public discussion about it, before y'all vote on it?
Eric, is this in the zoning law as it is, isn't it? So we'll have to have a public hearing, which means we'll put it, we'll first put it out in written form, and we'll have to vote for a public hearing, so we can tell them that public hearing for sure.
Anything else? Okay, Allen G.
Hold on, let me say this, because it's a zoning, you also have to go through the zoning board, so there'll be a second opportunity to speak.
Yeah, there's a lot of people that do know about it, there's a lot of people that don't know some stuff about it, I think being able to get something on, on paper that's a scheduled meeting, allow more people to notice and actually show up and give some, some input.
And that, actually, that public hearing can occur either of the two, it doesn't necessarily have to occur in a year. You agree with it?
I agree.
Okay, Allen G. is to approve proposal from local finance institutions, calendar year 2018, 2019. Anybody got anything on that? Now, we'll move on to item A, see. Item A, it's to prove Mayor Kent's necessary dockless for application for rural development wastewater treatment grant. Is that the wastewater program thing?
That's a sewer, sewer project, we've been working on for the last couple of years.
Wastewater treatment.
Can't try to get some money to, see if we can fund it.
So, I got most of Johnny, have a second. Second, my wheel, any other questions to discuss? All in favor? Any opposed? And item nine is airport board, board appointment.
Well, did you ask him what the name of the person was? I may have to call him if you, I better do that.
I'm not emailing him, I may have to get him some...
The bottom line is Josh West left, he's the owner, they need a replacement. He has someone, the person's already actively involved, they have two rentals out there already, and he thought this would be a good board member, I'll have to get the guy to handle that.
And he thought this would be a good board member, I'll have to get the back to him on that.
And the last item is executive session, or considered executive session for possible litigation.
And personnel, I mean, and personnel.
Reasons to. Kevin Dale?
Say.
Same, my wheel, any other questions or discussion on that? Okay, all in favor?